So cute.
I need a pen. Need a pen.
I'm glad you're writing, or it's gonna be really hard to read. I know work on it. That's why I like doing it. Have to work for it. Is there anybody online?
We have a bunch of people, yeah.
My name shouldn't come up anymore.
Alright, I think we are ready to start.
Are they on there?
Yes, but he's just letting them into the.
Okay.
And is he gonna hit record?
Yep, he hit record already.
I didn't hear it say.
Yeah, it was kinda quiet.
Yes.
And Cody, you can actually, you can leave it off, cuz we'll have Rob share his screen first, so, yeah.
Okay, alright, then I think we're ready to start. We'll call this meeting to order, and the first order of business is to discuss the school perceptions report.
Alright, so joining us online, we have the team that we've been working on throughout this process, and so School Perceptions is the entity that did both the survey in the fall, and then this most recent survey, so they're gonna share all the results with us. Alright, Rob, you ready to go?
I'm ready to go, sounds good. Do you have a paper copy? Is the screen?
Alright, we can't hear you quite yet, so we'll take a couple minutes to figure it out.
Again. Sure. Isn't this the board or whatever? I'm logged in.
I'm not logged in either.
Is your computer?
I'm just so glad I don't have to try to figure this out. Just sit here.
Yes. Can't see.
Hey, Rob.
Megan, can you hear me? Uh, yeah, testing, School District of Washburn. Okay, I will get going then. Um, so I have your report up here, much like last time, we'll take you through kind of four main categories of slides. We'll spend the least amount of time on blue, that's your background information, but nothing new on that slide, or slides, um, we'll talk about what was in your survey, but the good stuff is in the middle. Um, we'll talk about who took your survey, um, obviously, the most valuable and interesting part is the results and analysis, and then we'll leave time for wrap-up and questions at the end. So, uh, as you heard Ivy say, I believe that was Ivy, Ivy. Uh, we, uh, are the same company that did your survey last time around, not the same printer, so we got a better, uh, uh, mailing list, uh, but same company that did and wrote your survey, um, so I won't spend too much time on this slide, cuz hopefully my face doesn't look too unfamiliar. Let's talk about you. So, as you may know, your survey closed up on May seventeenth, so just coming up a month ago, for four hundred and eighty-three total respondents and a rock-solid response rate. Um, you're above average here, which is great, um, close to a quarter of your respondents took the survey, average is fifteen to seventeen percent, um, so that's great news. Um, the other number that is no fault of anybody's, it's just the way it is, depending on the size of your community. The size of your community and the pool of people that you have at your disposal to get data from, um, determines what your margin of error is. So when we survey in really big communities, their margin of error gets very tight. When you get in smaller and/or rural areas of the state, the margin of error gets, just gets bigger, only because you have fewer people to survey. Uh, all that being said, though, I will revisit that number maybe once or twice as we go on. Um, and for rounding sake, I guess I would just ask that you keep about four and a half percent in the back of your mind. Um, good responses from all age groups here as well, especially your sixty-five plus, you know, they'll be there on election day, we definitely want them um, to responding to a survey as well, and you blew it out of the water, over one-third of your respondents were sixty-five plus, that's great news. Um, and then you had a good representation across the age groups as well, kind of exactly what I would expect here. So we don't have a, a missing middle or anything like that, you have good representation across ages. Um, this question is very valued, so we asked, is your primary residence in the School District of Washburn? Um, obviously, it's no news to you that I could own property there and live somewhere else, um, you know, and vacation there, obviously, that, that's near and dear to your hearts, um, in your local economy, so we have to make sure we ask this question to focus on the people that can control an election within your school district boundaries. So if I have a property and it has a mailbox, I'll get the survey. Or even if I live in Ashland or Bayfield and I'm a staff member and I commute from elsewhere, I'm gonna get the survey because I have a, an email address on file. Um, same thing with any parent who open and rolls into the district, but by definition, they don't live there, or they wouldn't need to open and roll in. So there are people that may not live there full-time, but do get the survey. So, point of, of all that is, though, we are gonna focus on the eighty-five percent, because they are the ones that have an opportunity to control an election within the School District of Washburn. Um, you had representation from all municipalities here, and in fact, your, um, three townships had better representation this time around than they did last time around, so that's great news. Um, and then another important question, not so much for right this second on this slide, but it's gonna lead us down a couple of subgroups that we talked about last time with you, I believe that was in January I saw you last, so we're gonna wanna know how staff feel. We're gonna wanna know how parents feel, they're on the right, but then a really key group is the no-no, the non-parents, non-staff, we'll talk more about them in just a second, but these two questions are how we can slice and dice to get those three groups, staff, parents, and non-parents, non-staff. Um, also really good representation here. Um, we certainly want your staff and parents to take the survey, but we don't want them to be the only people taking the survey, because they in general are just more supportive of a potential referendum. So, if, if your data was dominated by staff and parents, you, your data could run the risk of being a little bit inflated, but that's not you here. You have plenty of no's on this slide, which will help us get to three good subgroups coming up on, on the upcoming minutes and slides. Moving forward, as you continue to do communications, whether it's before a potential referendum, whether it's before a kindergarten through eighth-grade concerts, before the holidays, whatever the case may be, whatever it is that you're looking to have people know about, you have really good data here to know how people want to know about you. So it doesn't say how, you know, how do you, how do you currently get information, it reads, how do you like to, so it's a preference question. So this is kind of the best bang for your buck. If you wanna reach non-parents, non-staff, they are in purple, and that's how this slide is ordered in descending order. So they really wanna hear about you by newsletters. Sixty percent were checking the newsletter box. And then I would say in kind of the tier-two level, if you really wanna catch the non-parent, non-staff group, they wanna learn about you in the Ashland Daily Press. They will learn about you on your website. And they will learn about you via Facebook, so whatever you can do to make sure that you get the articles you can in the Daily Press, or making sure that your website is, is very up-to-date, as along with your Facebook page, that'll be really important, um, as you try to reach and communicate with folks. Your parents are a bit more balanced, uh, like any district, they really want you to email them. And then again, you're kind of seeing a tier-two here in blue, um, newsletters, the website, Facebook, and then to some extent, phone notifications as well. The other way to look at this slide is the other side of the coin, where, where do we not put a lot of our, our time, money, and effort, because we're just not gonna get a lot of bang for our buck? Uh, people just start learning about you via TV and radio, um, don't spend a lot of time creating an Instagram page if you, if you don't already have one, um, and same thing with Twitter, it's just, it's not gonna garner a lot of eyeballs as opposed to some of these other, uh, avenues. Blue slides, so again, I'll spend the least amount of time on this, because this is exactly word-for-word what was in your survey, um, and I know you're intimately familiar with this now. Um, so talked a little bit about your financial situation and how your tax mill rate, um, the trend of that over the past few years, and along with comparisons to the state and being consistently below it. Your survey talked a little bit about how you've worked with, uh, Myron, just under the condition of the middle school, high school especially, some of those issues that you're asking respondents to help you solve, noting what you've done out of your own budget, and then noting that what's remaining, though, is just simply too expensive to be covered from the annual budget, therefore, you are exploring a capital referendum, um, which is something that doesn't make you alone. Um, this is something that nearly every school district has done over the past twenty-five years, um, nine in ten, to be exact. So this is certainly not a Washburn thing, this is just about everybody in the state uses referendums to fund this type of work. Then, as a survey taker, if I knew what the problems were, then I gotta know, well, what are you gonna do about them? And that was the purpose of this page here, so talked a little bit about the fact that, um, while you started a new school, the cost to build a new school is beyond what you're legally allowed to borrow, so that wasn't gonna be an option for you. So instead, what were you gonna do to update and maintain and replace and repair the, the current building, uh, the current middle school, high school? So we had a list of things that you were going to do at a cost of thirteen point nine, and also a shout-out to the Long Range Planning Committee as well. Now we're in green, so the, this is, this is why we're here tonight, these are the most valuable slides. The question read, would you support a thirteen point nine million dollar referendum to fund the Priority One Base Plan? In other words, the projects that we just talked about. Once again, we're only focusing on residents, the folks that can vote within your district, and this slide is only staff. Overwhelmingly supportive, nearly nine in ten said yes to the plan. Parents, also quite supportive, nearly three-quarters of your parents said they were supportive of the plan. Your non-parents, non-staff, also majority support, at fifty-six percent. The reason we do this this way, and I, and I'm gonna kind of bring all these threads together on the next slide, all of these groups are really important, but there's not the same number of people feeding each of these slides. So staff are arguably the most influential people in your community when it comes to a school project. They are the ones that are gonna get stopped, whether it's at a softball tournament or in the grocery store, they are the ones that are kind of the first ambassadors that people will ask about the plans at school, so we have to know what they think. Very influential, but there's just not that many of them. In any given election, your staff will make up about one percent of your voters, so you got kind of a, a scale there, really influential, not that many of them. Your parents are in the middle. Very connected, very engaged by definition of being parents. They're about a quarter of the community. So whenever I see non-parent, non-staff, or whenever I see purple, they'll always be represented in purple, I always put my eyes there first, for no other reason that most folks in your community, to the tune of about seventy-five percent, are encapsulated on this slide right here, this is where most of your voters lie, and the biggest chunk of your community, over majority, is saying yes to your plan. So, because these groups are different sizes, we have to wait the support that I just told you to shrink parents a little bit and expand non-parents, non-staff, because those groups are not the same sizes, and that's what this equation does here. So, parents came in at seventy-three percent support, they're one-quarter of the community, so we have to put a point-two-five in front of them. Your non-parents, non-staff, fifty-six percent supportive, they're about three-quarters of the community, and again, your staff, there's just not that many of them. So what this equation is telling us right here is, if the School District of Washburn Board of Education decided to put a thirteen point nine million dollar Priority One Base Plan referendum question on the ballot, today, we would expect about six in ten of your voters to support, sixty-point-three percent to be specific. Obviously, that was not the only part of your survey. Um, there were other slides here that were then some other maintenance or repair pieces that you'd love to do. Um, you know, you're exploring, you want feedback, um, but they didn't necessarily rise to the same level of importance as your Priority One projects, and there were three levels here, so Priority One, we just talked about, then there was Priority, Priority Two, Priority Three, and Priority Four. What the upcoming slides are gonna show you is what percentage of respondents said they'd be very likely, somewhat likely, or not likely, to support the project. Depending on what I said, my score was given a different number behind the scene, so if I was very likely to support something, it was a three-point-zero-zero. If it was kind of on the fence, somewhat likely, it was two-point-zero-zero, and not likely is one-point-zero-zero. In other words, the easy way to say that is, the higher the number, the more likely people are to support it, as in when you decide to put it on a referendum, but it gotta be between one and three. In terms of your Priority Two projects, um, I wouldn't say that there is a whole lot surprising here. Um, your safety, um, certainly tested well, especially at the middle school, high school, that was north of two, so people were leaning towards support for that. Um, and also above two, kind of a, above somewhat, and getting closer to very likely, are your middle school, high school restrooms and locker rooms, um, followed closely behind by your elementary school entrance, um, that did fall below the median, so now we're getting a little closer to, no, I'm not gonna support this at this time, um, a one, a score of one-point-nine-two for how likely I would be to support it. In terms of your Priority Three, again, I wouldn't necessarily consider any of this, um, surprising, your, your career in tech ed areas, your family in consumer science, anything that sounds like, um, job training, any things that sounds like people will be able to step out of high school and be ready for college and career, always test well, and that was especially true for your shop areas, at a score of two-point-one-seven, so again, we're leaning closer to, uh, people being likely to support CTE stuff. The final priority, and then I'm gonna bring all, again, these threads together and talk about what you do moving forward, um, were some of your additional ten-year maintenance plans, uh, one was above two-point-zero-four, that was the pipes. Everything else was below two, and again, now we're getting into the, no, I'm not likely to support this area now, um, down to locker, lockers and classroom cabinets and casework, and you can just see eyeballing this here, um, fewer than a quarter of your resident respondents said they'd be willing to support this, um, at this time. So, the way that I always like to put that together is, you know, it really does come down to money. Um, you know, there, there are lots of things that you probably wanna do to your house, whether it's adding a new roof, or redoing the floors, or expanding the garage, redoing your, your furnace and your air conditioning at home, there's a lot of things that are priorities for you, but at the end of the day, it all comes down to how much money is in your home budget, just personally as a homeowner in Washburn. Same thing goes with your survey here, um, people might think, you know, a lot of these are priorities, but at the end of the day, it's how much money am I willing to see leave my wallet in order to fund what you just told me? So it, it definitely comes down to money here, so what we did is we repeated some information, we said that Priority One Base Plan, which at this point was coming in at about sixty percent support, we were honored to remind people that that was a total of thirteen point nine million. And then we also reiterated what were the individual costs of Priorities Two, Three, and Four, so what this area of your survey was telling me is, as a survey taker, if you were to do everything, uh, everything at once, right now, it'd be thirty-two point three million, but your survey also disclosed, like, look, folks, we know that doing everything right this second is not realistic, therefore, we're gonna take your data and we're gonna decide what appetite you have, um, in terms of supporting this through a potential referendum. All that's well and good, but that is darn near meaningless to me as a, as a survey taker, until you tell me, well, what is this gonna cost me? Thirteen, eighteen, twenty-three, that is completely meaningless number, until we get to this row down here, and this tells me, well, for every one-hundred-thousand dollars of property value I have, how much money will I owe you? We recognize that you're gonna have a lot of property that's worth more than a hundred thousand, but that's kind of the normal number to make the multiplication as easy as it possibly be. So it ranged from a hundred ninety-nine per year for the base plan, up to four-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars per year for the all-in, but again, that's per one-hundred-thousand bucks. What did we learn? There's a lot of numbers going on this slide, but once you get the hang of it, um, it'll click together pretty quickly. So, the question read, what referendum amount would you support, assuming the projects included were acceptable to you? So we still have our same subgroups here, our non-parents, non-staff are on top, followed by our parents, followed by our staff. What this is telling us is, if you as a Board of Education decided to put a thirty-two million dollar referendum on the ballot today, we would expect about twelve percent of the largest chunk of your community to support it on election day. In other words, I mean, the easy way to phrase that is, by no means is there support for thirty-two million dollars right now, so we, we know we have to take the all-in price off the table. So then the logic is, well, how low or how cheap do I need to go until I cross this line right here, the fifty percent threshold? And the logic is, well, if I'm willing to pay for thirty-two million, I'm only getting cheaper. If I'm willing to pay thirty-two, I'm willing to pay twenty-seven, if I'm willing to pay twenty-seven, I'm willing to pay twenty-three and so on down the line. So, what I learned here is, non-parents, non-staff, they are supportive, one, two, three, four, five greens down is where they cross my red line, so one, two, three, four, five levels down, the biggest chunk of your community is saying they are willing to support your base plan, but not go above that. Your parents are a tad more supportive, they're supportive at four levels down, which is a referendum of about eighteen million. And your staff are supportive at three levels down, so they're coming in supportive at twenty-three million. But again, you heard me say earlier on, that not all these groups are the same sizes, so we have to do that same weighting exercise and take their support to manipulate it a little bit based on how big each of these groups are. Two thoughts before I do that, one of them being, your undecided folks here are in gray, and relatively speaking, there's really not that many of them, and that's not a bad thing, um, it's good to come away with this having pretty clear data. Um, if there had been, you know, nineteen, twenty percent of your non-parents, non-staff that were still undecided, I wouldn't blink an eye at that, that would not be abnormal. The fact that only about one in ten, and only seven percent of your parents, only five percent of your staff are undecided, um, the good thing is, people are telling you, they have made up their mind, they're telling you like it is. The downside of that is, you know, as you move forward, there are just fewer people that are gonna go one way or the other. So the fewer people that are gonna change their minds is getting fairly small. The other thing that I will call out here is there are very few people that are not supportive of anything. None of your staff that took the survey are saying they would support anything. Only ten percent of your parents are saying they would support anything, and only eighteen percent of your non-parents, non-staff are saying they would support nothing. So what I'm learning here is people say, yeah, there's a need, I get it, I get why you're gonna have to pursue a referendum. Had your non-parents, non-staff been about twenty-five percent up here in the upper right, that said they would support anything, again, wouldn't blink an eye at that. You would have been as normal as normal can be, so you have fewer people saying, no, don't do anything, than what is normal. So putting this all together, then, very similar method as before, what this slide is telling me is, if you as a board decided to put an eighteen million dollar referendum on the ballot, you would not reach fifty percent support. Under forty-four percent of your voters would support that plan. Very similar data here, um, and again, as we think about that margin of error, you're very similar to what you heard before, you know, approximately fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent of your community is willing to support a thirteen point nine million dollar referendum, so you're getting a lot of corroborating data, they told you they would support the base plan before, they're telling you again they would support the base plan, but they're also telling you, don't go above that, or you're not gonna reach majority support. Uh, before I finish up and take questions about that, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the other elements of your survey here. So rounding out was the, um, overall satisfaction. The question read, how is the district doing in each of the following areas? A perfect score is a four-point-zero-zero, the worst score a district can get is one-point-zero-zero. So I, I gotta be between those two numbers. The middle then, between one and four, is two and a half, so despite there being a lot of numbers on your screen, the first thing I do in any particular column or row is see, are you above or below two-point-five? The good news is, as I eyeball this again, only one out of your eleven numbers here are below two-point-five. So what this slide is saying is, in terms of delivering a high-quality education, how are our staff rating us, how are our parents rating us, and how are our non-parents, non-staff rating us on a one-to-four scale? The other items were, how are we doing in terms of keeping the public informed? How are we doing in terms of managing funds appropriately, and how are we doing in terms of building pride in the community? Your staff are particularly satisfied, you know, they're north of good and approaching great on some, or between good and great on all of these. Your parents are above the middle, they're above two and a half on all their items. The only one that is below two-point-five, and it's only by five-hundredths of a point, is keeping the public informed. However, the good news here is what we find is that just by nature of doing a survey and asking for feedback, even if I chose not to take the survey, this thing still landed on my calendar, so one, just by nature of doing a survey, people will feel more informed. The other way in the future, if you, uh, if you choose to do a survey again, I would not expect, or I would expect that number to increase further, because if I go back all kinds of slides, you now know exactly how to communicate with people in a way that they wanna be communicated with. So now you can go out and say, okay, to make sure that non-parents, non-staff feel more informed than they do now, here are ways we can talk to them directly. So, I guess, long story short, if and when you do a survey again, I, I usually, that number goes up, because now you know how to target different communications to different people. The other thing I'll say here, which really pleases me, is none of your items for managing funds appropriately are below two and a half, that's also not normal in a very good way. So usually, when we do a referendum survey, people will scratch their heads and say, well, if you need a referendum, you must not be managing your funds appropriately, or you wouldn't need a referendum. You know, it's kind of that cycle that people get into. So usually, people are most unsatisfied about how you manage funds, whenever you talk about a referendum. Um, the fact that you were able to maintain scores above two-point-five for managing funds appropriately, um, tells me that there's pretty good satisfaction in terms of how you manage tax dollars, um, relative to other districts, so the other way to look at this, um, is by putting all the residents together, same question, same items, but now I just pooled all those subgroups back together, and I said, well, what percentage of folks are saying we're doing a great or good job? And what is our overall average? When I do that, none of your items are below two and a half, and all of your items are accruing at least a majority. And again, if the lowest one is keeping the public informed, you know exactly how people wanna be communicated with now, and you can pump out communications to help improve that score. Finally, last question, on a scale of zero to ten, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? There's a couple different ways I choose to analyze this, um, first thing I do, which is maybe the most obvious, is I look and see where your score is. Are you above or below five? The higher the number, um, the more people are likely to recommend you. So you're well above neutral here, you're at a score of six-point-eight-three, neutral is five. So first takeaway, people are more likely to recommend you than they are not to. Second way I can eyeball this is just by purely looking at the colors from top to bottom, you have a lot more greens than you do reds, that's good, that's exactly where you wanna be. A third way I look at this is just by looking at, um, the sum of your tens, your nines, and your eights. So if I do that simple math, twenty-two and nine is thirty-one, plus another sixteen is forty-seven percent. The reason that's so important is, anybody that gives themselves a ten, or nine, or an eight, the research behind this question suggests that they are willing to act as an ambassador on your behalf, which means that they will go out and talk well about what you're doing to friends or family members, even outside of Washburn, without you having to do anything about it, they are, they're gonna be the ones that are gonna strike up that conversation, and nearly half of your folks are in that eight, nine, or ten category, and that's a really good place to be, so you have people out there talking good about you, and you don't have to motivate them to do so. When you bring in your sixes and sevens, these are people that have a positive association with you, they're just not necessarily gonna strike up a conversation about it. Uh, but when I do that, if I remember my number right, I think I was at forty-seven percent, so I added another thirteen, I'm at sixty, another seven, I'm at sixty-seven percent, so exactly two-thirds of your survey respondents have a positive association with what you're doing. Now, you didn't do a satisfaction survey, you did a referendum survey, and I recognize that, so why do I spend ten minutes of your night talking about these? I talk about them because these are things that you have to have in place before you even consider a referendum, so you have some good things to celebrate here, and obviously, it goes without saying that that's a good thing. So, let me flip that around and talk about what if these weren't good, well, if I don't feel like you tell me anything ever as a resident, if I don't feel like you're managing my tax dollars well, if I don't feel like you're a source of a pride in the community, there's no way I'm gonna raise my property taxes, nobody says, well, I really don't think you do a good job with taxes, but let me give you- Nobody says, well, I really don't think you do a good job with taxes, but let me give you more taxes. Nobody thinks like that. You have to have these hurdles cleared before you put something on the ballot, and you clear the hurdle. So again, I know I spend a lot of time on these, but A, I think there's something to celebrate, and B, I'm happy that you cleared these because you have to before anybody sees a potential tax increase on their ballot. So that is what I have for you tonight in terms of news. Let me pause there and take any questions you have.
Ken? Okay, the question I have is when we're looking at the support for the 18 million and the 13.9 million. The 18 million was 43.5%, the 13.9 was 57.5%. So that's not, I mean, it's a difference, but it's not gigantic difference. What I'm, and this is at the very beginning of the process, so to speak, with getting information out to our community. From your experience, when, as the school or as any school has started to sell this to their community, how much would you predict that that would increase?
Not 6.5%. Not enough to cross the $18 million threshold. You'd have to have the whole margin of error break to your side, but remember that margin of error is a pesky plus or minus. So when you're bringing that 4.5% that I had you jot down before, it means that you're looking, it could be as low as 30, what was that, 38%, right? If you said 39%. I've just never seen movement that much. So I think, I think you gotta rule out 18 million. I think you gotta stick with 13.9 based on the data you have here. And again, for no other reason, this data, because you have such a good response rate, you can extrapolate this to the rest of your community. And there's just not that many people this way. You just, you have a lot fewer undecideds than what is normal. So you have really clear data, but the curse of that is there's just not that many people out there that haven't yet made up their mind. So I just don't see support for $18 million at this time, even, even if you have a big yes committee of parents. I just don't see that flying at the moment. I don't think you'd back up 6.5% plus whatever margin of error there is. All I heard was eight. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, no, sorry. We're having a little issue.
I can hear you now again, Ellen. It doesn't seem to be an echo.
It's echoing here.
Yep, I did. That's a gamble. That's a roll of the dice. I still, I still stick by it, you know, with, with a margin of error that you have. And with the response rate that you have, our predictions are right about 94.5% of the time. I, I just, I don't believe there's support for 18 million at this time. You could. But I just don't see it. If you were to go that route, then you could put 13.9 million on as one question and test something additional as a second question. You have two questions per calendar year. But there's no if then statements in Wisconsin, unlike our neighbors in Minnesota, which means that if I like what you put in the second question, there's no guarantee that I'm gonna vote yes to question number one and, and get what you really need here. I might say no, yes, because I want to support you, but I only want to give you 4.1 instead of 13.9. Now, obviously, that's a, that's a board decision, but I, we're not wrong all that often. And I think if you put $18 million on the ballot, it would.
Okay, so my other question is, if we put 13.9 as a referendum, and then if we had another one that, and I don't know what amount it would come out to, if it would be, you know, another 4 million or 5 million or whatever, but to, for another amount to start moving forward with either purchasing land or something that would move us ahead of where we are right now for the future? That we would have something that in 20 years or 25 years, we'd say, well, we have property that, that we could build on, and that's already taken care of, and that's already paid for. You know, can we move forward then?
Well, let me tell you what I see happen in other districts. So I think what I see happen is there's a, there's a finite pool of yes people. And once you put more than one question on a ballot, they will start to split in terms of their yeses, and this number is going to go down. Because some people feel like, well, I do want to support you, I do like you, but if you present me two options, and I, and the options are 13.9 or 4 million, I might choose 4 million. Because that, I want to do something good, but that's less than, that's a, that's a 1/3 of the price. And I'm gonna give you that instead. And then you might be up the creek without a paddle, because what if that wins? And you're buying land, but you are not using it to fix the things that are on your survey. And then you're buying land, and you're not putting maintenance into the current building, and that really makes people mad. It looks like you're putting the cart before the horse, or it looks like you bought a Cadillac without a steering wheel. So you're gonna split the boat. The, and actually, we ran these numbers earlier on at the state convention this year. And when there's two questions on a ballot, we can look and see how likely those are to be supported. It becomes a coin flip. You can flip a coin and you know just as well which, which way the winds are gonna blow. Each one has about a 50, 50% chance when there are two questions on a ballot. So it's gonna, it's gonna lower, because people are gonna split what they want to do. And some people are just gonna give you the cheaper of the two. The other thing that I've seen happen before, and again, I'm not saying this would happen in Washburg, I'm just saying I've seen it happen in other districts, is somebody that may not be with you tonight or may not be watching, and if they read in the paper or they look at this report online, they're gonna say 13.9 is supported, 18 is not. We told you, no, it's 18. You already knew what you were gonna do before you did the survey, so why did you ask? If you knew you were gonna do 18, then why did I bother filling the survey out? And it makes people really mad a lot. And I'm nervous for that to happen. I don't want you to have backlash when you have really good data here and jeopardize something at 3.9, or excuse me, 13.9, because there's, there's a perception that you knew what you were gonna do before you ever asked. That's where I've seen things come off the rails before. But again, I, obviously it goes without saying that you know Washburg better than I do in terms of what people would support or like or not. But I would get nervous about it. I think 13.9 is a, is a slam dunk right now, and I'm nervous to see a slam dunk blocked.
All right, I'm gonna ask a question that's like, I guess, kind of hypothetical, and it probably doesn't even matter. But just based on your experience, is there some psychology to like presenting a baseline that was 18 million versus 13.9? Like if we had presented 18 million as our, you know, kind of like baseline proposal, do you think that would make a difference? Or do you think that that baseline is really based on like the actual tax increases?
100% correct on the last.
Don't speak yet, because we can't hear you quite yet. But, but yeah, that annual tax impact, like maybe that's what the baseline was, was determined by. So sorry, we gotta turn up the volume.
Yeah, I see the message. So you're 100% correct. That threshold is not at that number there. It's at the tax impact down here. And 200 is one of those numbers. So you snuck in right below it at, at a buck 99 in your mill rate. That's what I look at in terms of what those thresholds are. Yeah, I'm kind of curious what, what's going through Megan and Becca and Kevin, Kevin's mind here. But I know that in my experience, I can count on one hand. Probably, I don't even know that I need a full hand to see the number of referendums that have passed, that have a mill rate impact north of two bucks. And you're well north of two bucks here. I think Bosque Bell did it. Trying to think, I think one other group did it, maybe this past spring. So maybe I only need two fingers to do that. So you're, I completely agree with you. It's, it's the 13.9, and it's this tax impact here. I think if you would have started at 18, I think you would have heard a no right out of the gate. I think your data reflects that you're based on that tax impact.
Flexibility within. There is some flexibility within that 13.9, though what's included in there. So we saw from the results that the secure entrance at the middle school, high school was something this community really valued. That was above 2.1, I think, or 2.2. And I don't know if Megan wanted to chime in on that one at all.
Okay. Hi, this is Megan. My question would be in regards, and this is a question to Rob. So in that 18, or in that deviation from 13.9 to 18 million, we had asked priority of three things, three items and priority two. That secure entrance did, at the middle school, high school, did test the highest in that bucket. Knowing that we're about 57% support on 13.9, would there be some flexibility in breaking out just that secure entrance? I'd like to hear your thoughts on that. Oh, but as I'm still unmuted, to piggyback off of what Rob said with the tax impact, that $2, like he said, unheard of, for people who do, are able to pass it, that's a huge win for them, but it's definitely a hurdle to climb.
So, can you hear me? Am I good? Look at my messages, make sure you can hear me. Okay, you're right. It is north of two. However, I do remember that conversation when I was with you in the February. I can't, I'm trying to think about when your survey, when you approved it before it went to print. And I think somebody had asked, or somebody had said, these priorities are what we're determining. So we're not gonna touch priority three until we do priority two and so on down the line. So is there a little flexibility in terms of the likelihood score? It is north of two, but I do remember that conversation of we are gonna do these things in order, and we're gonna check priority one off, then we're gonna move to priority two. We're gonna move through priority two, then move on to priority three. And I, and I, I remember that part of the meeting, and I, I know that's publicly available. So I'd be nervous about going back on that message that was so clear the last time I was with you. And I'm afraid that if I wasn't paying attention to everything, I would say, well, again, you knew what you were gonna do before you asked me. And I get very nervous about that perception, because it not only damages you now, it damages you for future surveys and referendums that you may study over the next five, 10, 20 years. People's memories are long there. So could you do it? Yes, but this is the number people now have in the back of their mind. It's 13.9. It's 199 bucks a year for 100K. So if you were going to go that route, I think what you're probably gonna need to do is minimize something. The total still needs to be 13.9, and if you were gonna go with a secure entrance, I think it's gonna have to displace something else, or it's gonna have to make something cheaper in the base plan, based on the messaging that I heard from the board last time around. So I think you can do it, but I think it would need to stay under this amount here. We've had, we've seen that happen. People come back to their survey, and they keep it for a couple of years in a drawer in their, in their, in their cupboard, and say, you told me you weren't gonna do this right away. You lied to us. Why'd you lie to us? And I don't want that messaging to hurt you later on.
Thing that wouldn't be on that 13.9, like Rob said, would have to be on a 10-year plan in a very specific timeline, because we do want to respond to the community and what they have asked us to prioritize. So that would really be the only wiggle room, is if we then had a very specific plan within our, just our annual budget. The good news is there's lots of time to process. And so I think that from here, we'll have this recorded and put up right on the website. So anyone who wasn't here can still access all the results, the survey or the slides itself are already up there. But then just getting a chance to hear Rob explain it, too, I think is really helpful. He does a great job of explaining what each of those data points mean. So that will be up for the community, and there's lots of time to process and receive questions, and it's a big journey.
I just, I just want to say, because I know you mentioned that a few times, that, that we may have come in here already knowing what we're going to do. And I feel pretty sure that we did. We do not know what we were going to do. I mean, I don't think anybody here had an absolute plan of this is what is going to happen. I know I sure didn't.
Exactly.
And so I'm learning this information as everybody else is, and, and just trying to look at what is going to be the best decision for the district.
Awesome. Thank you, Rob. Thanks, Megan. Thanks, Kevin.
Very interesting.
Public comments will be next. We can put the chat, the chat clips on. Okay.
And I, and I also wanted to say thank you to the long range planning, because I know that there was a lot of time and effort put into this process. So thanks, everybody who was involved with that. It's a big commitment. All right, so we're going to go into public comments. If you would like to speak for public comment, each person has three minutes. And it's their time alone and cannot be passed on to someone else's time. If you have concerns or comments about individuals, those are not appropriate during public comment times. So please don't say anything that would identify circumstances or a person or a group of people directly by what you say. Be respectful. People on Zoom are welcome to join the public comment. Just put your name in the chat. Is there anyone here that would be, like to speak to the board? Is there anybody in the chat that would like to speak? Okay, then we will move on. Approval of financial reports and bills.
Went through the bank reports for the month of May, and everything checks out. Looks great. Looks, seems like all of the working facets of the district from that perspective, and I really will sound as I've mentioned. And if you can reference the administrative reports, we have a pretty solid budget ending this month. So cheers, and I move to approve the financial reports for May of 2024.
There a second? Or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. School improvement meeting.
Sure.
We'll let Ivy take it away.
Yeah, I'll take it away. Sounds good. And we always start off with mission, vision, values of our district. In this meeting, we actually got to add in the new strategic goals. And so that's a subcommittee of the long range planning created those. And that's something that will guide our work moving forward. So it was really great to integrate that right into the school improvement process. We did look at data from the spring. So we looked at proficiency levels on our STAR, our district assessment. And often this will reflect what will happen on our state scores. And so we can kind of get a prediction of what will happen in the fall, which will be on our school report card. We can see a nice steady increase in proficiency, especially in reading across all grade levels. Math is a little bit more inconsistent and a little bit slower. And that's one to be expected with a new resource. We're only in year one, and usually by year three, you really see that growth. But I also know that's gonna be a top priority, priority for us moving forward. Throughout the summer, Angie, Denise, and I are all committed to really making math a top priority moving forward. We also looked at science and social studies data, which we don't normally do. And our students are significantly above the state average. We have more students who are proficient and advanced in both science and social studies than the state average. And that's something definitely to celebrate. We did review the work that we did this year. So we had some focus areas, standards work, curricular resources, depth of knowledge, instructional minutes, and intervention system. They were very, very specific action items. It was these focus areas that we wanted to prioritize. And so we reviewed all the different ways that we integrated those into staff meetings, PLC meetings, building goals. And then at this point last year, we actually set our focus areas for the next year. But instead of doing this in the May meeting, we decided we wanted to wait, because over the summer, the leadership team will be working so hard on those district strategic goals that we're gonna have some really nice specific action items for school improvement starting in the fall. So we're excited to report those out to the board, probably in September or October, as well as long range planning, and of course, the staff. The other topics we covered were supporting students above proficiency at or advanced. And so in it's student, supporting students above proficiency at or advanced. And so ensuring we have a really nice comprehensive system in place and working on continuous improvement there. And then we also talked about just different types of data. A lot of this meeting focuses on one test that happens once a year for some of our students. And so we wanted to talk about some of the other assessments that we use and just other measurements like extracurricular involvement, post-graduation, all of those different things. So we also covered that. And then we are going to adjourn until next fall.
You wouldn't have figured out the reports that for the the testing yet you get that in the fall. I was just kind of wondering if you will look then at the star and see how that correlates.
Yeah.
If there's been a correlation.
Yeah, yeah. So we have some projected numbers. And so we project a slight increase in proficiency in reading across all three. So elementary, middle and high school. We, it looks like it's going to be pretty straight across the board in math. So probably not a huge increase in math for the fall. But we're pretty excited about the increase in, in reading, but it may not reflect in that overall number of stars that we get or the overall score. But our goal is at three percent increase in proficiency and we are definitely moving towards that. Great question, great question.
Any other questions for school improvement?
All right. And I know there's a little something for the staff recognition.
Yeah.
Yep.
Let's, all right, Cody, could you put that PowerPoint up? There's no audio on it, so I'll just talk with no echo. We've got two different things to recognize tonight. Each year we do the Fraser Teacher of the Year. And the criteria for this, there's a couple of different factors. The teacher must be in the district as a full-time instructional staff member for five years or longer. They couldn't have won in the last three years. And they have to show excellence in their field when it comes to professional development, when it comes to working with students. So it's some really specific criteria. It's a lengthy process of people nominating their colleagues and then going through that whole process of selecting our, our teachers of the year. And Angie, do you want to present first for the middle school, high school?
Sure.
Okay. Do you want the clicker or should I click for you?
Yeah, you can click it over there.
Sounds good.
Across the room. So the middle school, high school teacher of the year, this is what the students had to say about this particular person. So I think three times.
Sure.
This person was always so nice. They always have a smile on their face. They're always willing to help even when I'm not good at whatever it is that we're doing. And that the kids love being in this person's classes. They think this person is amazing and awesome and they just love being around this person. Their colleagues, they are always encouraging them to create their best work. They're always working one-on-one with students. So whenever you walk past this person's classroom, if you peek in and you look, they're always working with someone to help them do what they need to do. Their interactions with the students are always very, very positive. This is a person at the middle school, high school. When this person talks at a staff meeting, people listen. So they're always very highly regarded by all students and by the staff as well. And this person always has a smile, always has a laugh and is extremely approachable. So this person does a lot. They teach seven through twelve in this building. They typically per semester teach six to seven different courses in one semester, which is amazing. This person is an amazing advocate, supporter and leader for the importance of the arts in education and throughout life. This person is a role model as a teacher, as a coworker and as a flat out human being. So this year's middle school, high school teacher of the year was Miss Kristen Tepner and it's so deserving. She's amazing. She is somebody that I go to and talk to when I, you know, live for a boost every once in a while because she's always smiling. She's always encouraging. She's amazing. I'm really happy that she was chosen this year. Congratulations to her.
All right. We also have someone selected from the elementary schools. We kind of start off with the process of elimination, figure out who it is. And we ask students how they feel and students at the elementary, so imagine our littlest learners, this is how they describe this teacher. Very kind and activities are great. This is someone who helps me get my jobs done. And this person is the nicest. The colleagues described this person as always having a smile on their flight, on their face, as being highly positive towards all students and staff. Having excellent instruction for individual students in small groups and with the entire class. And this person presents informative, engaging professional development to our entire school and our entire district. So they have a huge impact on our profession. This person has helped us implement the zones of regulation. If you are not familiar with the zones of regulation, it's different emotions and identifying those emotions, honoring them, finding strategies to cope with them. And we're using that throughout the entire school. Also has helped us implement handwriting without tears, which is a great resource for occupational therapy, but also great for all students. This is a person is an expert in the field of occupational therapy and inclusive education. They make sure that everybody learns at high levels, every single student in our school. And they are a huge advocate for, for all kids. And that's Miss Lori Spango Bauer, occupational therapist. Actually have a great picture. So we did present them with the awards. So they each receive a stipend for that award. And then we took their picture and it's posted up on the website.
And they're smiling very nicely.
And they sure are. All right. And then after that first step recognition, we're going to move into honoring our retirees.
I just want to say, I was on the committee to choose.
Yeah.
And we were choosing the people and there were a number of people that were nominated. And it was a very hard decision on, you know, because we have so many great staffs. But these two people are very, very deserving.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. We're going to honor a couple of retirees. So at the same meeting, at the end of the staff or end of the school year, we have a staff meeting on the second to last day of school. And so we presented those two and nobody knows it's, it's pretty top secret. So it's really fun to reveal that. But then we also say a few things about the retirees and I won't launch into the full speeches that I gave. But I will just highlight a couple of key things about some of the key retirees this year. The first two who have retired is Miss Sue is retiring and Michelle Lee. She stepped down there, sisters who worked together in her kitchen at the elementary school. And they are so kind and so patient and so caring for our students. And if you think about the fast-paced environment of the kitchen, how hot it is, how stressful it is. And you have kids asking you, I'm sure they got asked what's for lunch a hundred times a day. And they were so, so wonderful to our students. They're going to be so greatly missed. And they really took on the, the culture of our school. So the first couple of days I was helping because every kid has a punch in their own number, right? So it goes to the right account. Imagine doing this for hundreds of kids every single day. And so I was kind of telling them, oh, the student's name, the student's name. And they realized that, oh, you know, every kid in the whole school. I said, yeah, of course we do. And then about a week later, they both knew all the kids too. And as every kid went through, they said them by name. They asked how they were doing and they loved those visitors. So we're going to miss both of them. All right. The next retiree that we're going to honor is Mr. Jim Marsh. So longtime fifth grade teacher. Really famous for, yeah, he's famous Americans was a big, big part of his curriculum, toothpick bridges, Lake Superior Studies. He was famous for kickball games. And I told the story of he played this game where there's a trash can in front and you crink up a ball. You throw it in there. And if you make it, you go out for recess. And if you miss it, you still go out for recess. And he just made it really fun for kids. And we all kind of share these little moments that he helped us remember. But in thinking about this, reflecting on it, those little moments were actually the big moments. That's what really helps kids learn. It transferred over to math and into their instruction. And it transferred into lifelong skills. And that's what people are remembering and something that we can honor him with by continuing that, that tradition. All right. The next retiree is with us in person, Mr. Rick Seppa. And as I went to try to speak about Mr. Seppa, the thing that kept coming forward was that everything I tried to say was an understatement. It just couldn't do justice to what Mr. Seppa has done in his forty years here as a teacher. And I started off saying he's impacted hundreds of students. I was like, no, that's an understatement. It's actually been thousands. And just even the word impact doesn't do justice to what Mr. Seppa has done to introduce music to kids who've never experienced it, to support students who thrive in music and access it as a profession as they've graduated. The experiences that kids have had traveling, leaving this small community and seeing big cities, being exposed to music, kids who maybe didn't feel like they belonged in other places or didn't feel comfortable. And then they would shine in the band room. They would shine on stage. And that's pretty amazing. And again, it's, it's nothing I can say that really does justice to it, but it is great to honor Mr. Seppa. All right. And then the last retiree we're going to honor is Dr. Tom Wyatt. And he would normally be sitting right here and we're excited to welcome Superintendent Denise Michelson next month. So she'll be sitting right here. And I don't think that he's ever missed a board meeting until now. He's with his grandkids right now, which is going to be his new top priority. And I think we're all really excited and happy for him. But I also think that goodbyes are tough for him. And so I don't know, maybe it's not entirely a coincidence, but there's a couple of things I wanted to say just to honor him. And one of them was how hard it is to be a superintendent. It is a difficult job and I would even go as far as to say impossible. Because you think about he's serving all of the students, all of the staff, all of the parents, all of the taxpayers, all of the community members. And each of those groups have differing opinions on the decisions that he should make. And that's a huge weight that he has carried with him for the past thirteen years. And he has always really lived by the motto or the question, is it best for kids? So every time I ask him for advice, he always asks, is it best for kids? And by asking that question, using that to guide his decisions, he's always done what he feels is best for kids. And I really challenged our staff to continue asking ourselves that question because if we keep asking ourselves, is it best for kids? We're not only going to do what's best for kids, we're going to continue this tradition of excellence in Washburn. And I have the photo of three of our retirees. Heidi, did you want to help with the? And we have one for the other retirees too, and we'll give them to them at a later date, but we use for Mr. Seppa. I know. That was the best. Thanks, Cody. You can turn the PowerPoint off.
We are going to miss all of them considerably. And they have made a magnificent contribution to the school.
Absolutely.
Okay, safety drill. No, we're going to go from so exciting to safety drills and annual seclusion and restraint report. What a, what a transition.
Yeah, I know. I should have done that one first. Just a quick overview. Safety drills are required by state statute. And so we practice fire drills every month. We also do severe weather drill in April, practicing what would happen if there's a tornado. And then we practice at least two safety or lockdown drills each year. We do this with the coordination of the Washburn Police Department. Chief Johnson's been excellent in helping us implement those. And from teachers and students' perspectives, it might feel the same because it's that routine. But there's the benefit to practicing. It is huge. The research behind that is huge. And then from our perspective as administrators, as we walk through the hallways, each time we practice, it gets significantly better and we continue to make improvements to keep our students in our school as safe as possible. Anything to add, Angie?
Nothing major. There is the potential of a, this summer sometime, we've talked with Denise about it a little bit. We're kind of in the talks a little bit more about doing a more significant training in the building with different law enforcement entities within the county coming in and just kind of using our building. So that's a possibility that's in the works for maybe like early August. But we don't have any details on that quite yet. So we're still talking with Denise, talking with the officer who's in charge of teaching that, kind of figuring out what that is. And so once we have more details, I'll let you know.
And then seclusion and restraint at the middle school, high school. Zero instances of each elementary was zero for seclusion, four for restraint. And then we'll report on that each year.
Thank you. All right. We're going down to the consent agenda. Which consists mostly of summer school teachers, but a few resignations and.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Have a question. Does anybody disapprove? Motion carried. Discussion items. CC twelve update. Well, it was, it's in your packet. It's pretty simple. It was just the reorganization of the, the board. I don't think there's any legal updates right now. And I don't think we have any report from WEC. Because that was there on vacation or they're on retreat or they're on recovery or something. Rest, AGR.
Yes. So achievement gap reduction, we were put on this each year. The nice thing is that this is directly aligned with our school improvement work. And so just like we look for increases in proficiency in school improvement, looking for the same thing for achievement gap reduction. The difference is that we get, receive funding from the state for the AGR. And so we have to meet this through three different criterias that's specified by the state of Wisconsin. So one of them would be small class sizes. One of them would be instructional coaching. And one of them is one-on-one tutoring, or we call it one-on-one tier three interventions. And so that applies to kindergarten, first, second and third. And we use either two or three of those strategies in every one of those grades and only one is required. So we always want to prioritize all of them. And then we monitor that progress throughout the year, beginning of the year to the middle of the year, to the end of the year. We see a nice increase in proficiency. It looks very similar to what it looks like in the older grade levels. And we want to be mindful of not overtesting because it just feels a little different when you're a younger student doing that testing. But we try to do one-on-one in person as opposed to always just relying on that computer to make sure we have the most accurate results. And then we've been using this system to then provide support for students. As you hear about act twenty with some of those literacy updates, some of those requirements specific to reading will fit right into that plan. So students who we see might have lower scores or might be missing skills, but then be receiving additional support. We already have that system in place. So as those new requirements are enforced, it's going to be a pretty smooth transition for us.
Thank you. The individual action agenda. I'm going to just let you guys move through this.
Great. I call to move to approve open world students for the twenty twenty four, twenty five school year.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to approve lunch prices for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
I'll second. Is there any discussion about those like the prices? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve the contract for Janet Kozniewski.
I'll second.
Discussion? Other than we of course want you here.
That was a ten-year contract.
She thinks it was only one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number four.
I move to approve Ryan Barnham as evening cleaning.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to approve Allison Gravco as high school volleyball coach.
I'll second.
Fight it out.
Fight it out, yeah.
So you truly got it? You went already? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Number six.
Make a motion to approve Jane Iverson as part-time summer gardener.
I will second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to approve Patrice Fontecchio as full-time ELC worker.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Well, here's another one that's shaky.
I move to approve the contract for Cody.
Check.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Is this again for ten years? Is that?
Forty.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to approve the HE three thousand contract.
I'll second.
Any discussion? It's pretty pricey. Do you want to talk a little bit about how you're going to change it for?
Yeah.
It could possibly change.
Yeah, we always want to make sure we're using the right resources at the right time. There's tons of wonderful resources, but just meeting the needs of our students. This one is pricey because it's both math and literacy. As we move away from screen, screen learning on the, using technology during our block, we're using it for very specific interventions at students level. And that's what both the HE three thousand does for literacy and Alex for math. But for both of those, we're using them from about third grade through potentially eleventh or twelfth grade. And that's a long range, especially if kids have done it for many years in a row. So I anticipate this contract will change over time because we will probably transition to other resources, especially at the secondary level. But right now, based on our school improvement data and the work that we've done so far, it still is a right match for us.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number ten.
I move to approve the summer cleaning contract for all schools from North Woods Back and Cleaning Supplies LLC.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn. I'll second. Thank you, everybody for coming. We didn't do it quite as sp-. We didn't do it quite as fast as we can.